Good evening and welcome to the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting for the zoning board of appeals. As I am sure you are all well aware, we are experiencing a lot of inclement weather in Fitchburg this evening. We had planned for this meeting to be held remotely with all board members and petitioners as well as the public being able to participate with the very good help of FATV and Zoom. However, at this point in time of the six available members of the board, one is working in emergency services and the other four do not have either internet or power, something which I think is probably being shared by a lot of you this evening. As a result, because we believe that the best way to hear both the public and the petitioners is by at least a visual connection, we will be pausing this meeting and holding it in recess until seven fifteen P M. At seven fifteen P M, we will resume the meeting. And at that point in time, it is my expectation that we will be calling each matter, allowing anyone who wants to make a brief statement, and by brief, I mean approximately one minute, to make such statement and then hearing a motion to continue that matter to the next available meeting. I do apologize. We do try to keep our agenda and move all matters that come to us forward for their betterment and for the benefit of the city. However, there are times when delay is more appropriate to give each applicant and any public member who wishes to comment on it a full ability to be heard, and that is today. So anyone who would like to is welcome. I hope that was heard. Anyone who would like to is welcome to re-enter the meeting at seven fifteen. And anyone who wishes to wait until the next meeting, I would ask that you check and verify the rescheduling on the city's website where the zoning board posts its agenda. The meeting date will be listed, the meeting time will be listed, and the means of remote access will be listed. In the meantime, I do hope everyone is keeping safe and warm. And I wish you all good luck tonight and wish well all of the emergency responders who are keeping us all safe and warm tonight. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to the March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the zoning board of appeals. As you've seen on the notice, we have four out of five board members experiencing difficulties with the connection this evening. So what we are going to do at this point in time is call each matter, see if there's any brief comment on it, and then consider a motion for continuance. The first matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-one Tarapania. This is a review of a special permit at four forty-seven Water Street to continue the business operation of an auto dealership in repair. On this matter, I have received a communication colloquially that the applicant or that the permit holder has agreed to a continuance to the next meeting, which is April the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. If any person here wishes to make a comment on the matter, please raise your hand. Seeing none. I am going to ask if a board member can make a motion to continue this review to April the eleventh.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Brian Gallagher.
Thank you. We're going to take the vote by roll call. Mr. Gallagher? On the motion? Mr. Byrne, on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Shartrind on the motion?
Yes.
And I am in favor, so that is four zero. That matter is continued until April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. The next matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-two dash zero five A G Dreamflip LLC. This is a property at eighty-three eighty-five Marshall Street. This is up for a review of the special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned building as a three-family dwelling in the residential seed district. If any member of the public is here to make a comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none. I don't believe we have received any communication from this petition, this permit holder, but it is a review, so we may continue. I will make a brief comment that there appears to be not much progress and that there does seem to be some compromise on the supporting wall. So I would like to see the applicant or the permit holder strengthen that while it's waiting to move forward. Is there a motion to continue this matter to the April eleventh meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and again by roll call, Mr. Shartrind on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne, on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher on the motion?
In favor.
And I am in favor as well. That passes four zero. The next matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two. This is four seventy-nine Water Street, not four forty-seven. It's an active street. This is a continuance of a petition for special permit to reinstate a vacant or abandoned building, and that is conversion from a four-family to a two-family in the neighborhood business district. Is any person here from the public who would like to comment, please raise your hand? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to continue this matter to the April eleventh meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I second.
Thank you. By roll call vote, Mr. Byrne, on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Shartrind on the motion?
In the affirmative.
And Mr. Gallagher on the motion?
In favor.
And I am in favor as well. Apologies, we just had another snowfall off the back of the roof. That carries four to zero. That matter is continued until April eleventh. The next matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash ten. This is an application from Louis Colton on twenty-one Union Street. This is an application for a special permit to reinstate and change the use of a vacant or abandoned building from a church to a single-family dwelling located in the residential seed district. Now, Mr. Colton, I'm going to unmute you. And if you would like to bake about a one-minute statement, you are welcome because we are now going to open the public hearing. Okay? Go ahead, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, sir.
All right, fine. Yes, this was, this was an abandoned building that we're really bringing back to the neighborhood use, it was multi-use, a church and a resident. We want to bring it down to one family. Our issue here, and I know that you question me if there's any special opportunities, the folks that are selling this are bound by closings and they have other, they have another property and it's creating quite a bit of hardship. There's, there's no, just ask the question, is there any special opportunity to have this heard possibly earlier under any circumstances?
We would need to make an arrangement on space and ability to broadcast. We have our alternate meeting date on Thursday. And that is going to be entirely occupied by another case that we are hearing. I, I'm going to ask Mr. Barbadoro, I don't see any opportunity to hear it before April eleventh. If you have any comment on that.
Your, your special hearing, you have exactly one hour, and I doubt you'll be able to leave and finish the case that you got, so.
I agree. Okay, thank you. Mr. Colton, I appreciate the concern and the request, but unfortunately, I don't believe that we're able to accommodate it. I wish it were otherwise. We had planned to hold this meeting remotely, and unfortunately, it just did not work out. And
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Byrne, a question for the applicant. I didn't see a parking plan on that, on the application. Did I miss it, or is there none? And if there is none, he's got to get one to us before we can have a hearing on that.
Yes.
There's no parking on the site. We'll have to go back to what I believe is, understand from from discussions with the building commissioner, that street parking for a unit is permitted, it's permissible.
Mr. Colton, just for the next hearing briefly, the concerns that I saw were parking or arrangements for off-street parking. As you know, there is there is across the street a larger student housing facility. The second option that I know of is the train station parking garage that is nearby. And whether or not it's a requirement, I know it's a concern that I had. The second concern is that we note that there are, seem to be some slates that are falling from that roof and hitting the neighbor's property. So just as a matter of addressing a safety issue, if the applicant could look at that, that would be good. Mr. Barbadoro has his hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Yep, I'll be brief. I just wanted to clarify that statement made by the applicant that what we had discussed was the fact that the, there was a church which is a byright use on that property. So it was a church without a parking lot. So a house may be less intensive of a, less detrimental to the neighborhood in terms of parking than a church might be. So that was something for the board to consider, but yeah, there is off-street parking requirements for both uses. But the question before the board, if the applicant is unable to provide parking, would be is it better off as a single-family dwelling, or is it better off staying as a church? Thanks.
I think
Thank you, Mr. Barbadoro.
The church is more, has, has more need for parking. We're, we're just looking for one family, so we would only be addressing parking for one family dwelling.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who is here to speak on this petition? If so, raise your hand. Seeing none. We are going to therefore entertain a motion to continue this matter until April the eleventh. Is it so moved?
So moved.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Thank you. By roll call vote, Mr. Shartrind?
In the affirmative.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And I am also in favor of the continuance. Mr. Colton, I very much appreciate your making the effort to attend tonight. I am sorry that we could not fully hear the matter tonight. We will see you on April the eleventh. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
The next matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash eleven. This is, this was a petition for special permit by John Rodriguez on eighty-eight Ashburn Ham Street. And this was a special permit for the revival and conversion to, from one non-conforming structures used to another. After examination, this matter did not require attention from the Z B A. This property was not non-conforming, and the use that was contemplated is allowed by right in the district. So after review, that question was asked of the building department and answered in the affirmative, and therefore the petition was withdrawn.
One question, Madam Chair.
Of course, Mr. Byrne.
Where is the property? Michael and I drove out there in the Ashburn Ham, and we got out there, and we found an eighty-one and a ninety, but we didn't see any eighty-eight out there. Which property was it? Was it the house that looked like it was two houses put together?
It was a white house on the corner.
Almost on the corner.
With a very tall retaining wall in front of it and a chain link fence in the backyard?
I didn't see any backyard. Okay, as long as you, as long as you found it, that's fine with us, but yeah, let's continue it.
Okay.
Oh, no, let's drop it. Thank you.
Yep, that's withdrawn.
But we're dropping it.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thank you.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
The next matter is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash twelve. This is an application for special permit on two nineteen Highland Ave by Nina Gobriel. And if I mispronounced that, I do apologize. This is a special permit to reinstate the Variety Convenience Store and add a package store to serve beer and wine in the existing pizza store in Residential B. Is there any person here from the public who is, wishes to speak on the matter? If so, raise your hand. The public hearing is open. I see none. And I'm just going to note that all of the persons before us tonight, thanks to Ms. Mata's work, did receive a notice of the issues we were experiencing. I am going to note that on this matter, I, I think there may be an issue with the parking, so I would like to see the eight spaces that are required under the existing variance on the property. But I, I think with some moving of the dumpster that they probably can accommodate the eight spaces that are required. Mr. Gallagher, did you want to touch briefly on your visits with them?
Well, yeah, I, I, I had gone out and wanted to look at the square footage that they were actually talking about for the variety store and couldn't actually get that way because the vending machines were sort of acting as a barrier to the area. So he took, the, the applicant took me through the kitchen, and I noticed the kitchen was in immaculate condition. Everything was as it should be. Walked around to the area that is in question, and he's currently using it as a storage area, but would like to open it up and explain to me that he's currently, he's paying for the square footage currently, and he'd like to utilize it by benefiting the area to make it a convenience store, so. Those were my observations. Went out and I looked at the parking. I think eight parking places are, are doable, and like you said, perhaps moving the dumpster would be what needs to happen for them to be legal spaces.
Yeah, I, personally, I do have some concern about this operating as a package store as a convenience store. I have less concern given that it's servicing the college area. Mr. Barbadoro has his hand up. Please go ahead, Mr. Barbadoro.
Yep, I just wanted to clarify an error on my part earlier. I did give a response to the gentleman saying that this is a use prohibited in the R B, but in fact, it is a use that is requires a special permit with the zoning board of appeals. So the building is non-conforming, so you need to do a section six finding, and you, you need to make findings based on section ninety-four, but not to weigh in either way on whether or not that's you know, a recommendation. I try and stay away from that.
Okay. So I, I think that for the next meeting, I would like to see some information on parking, how the parking requirement under the last permit is being met, if that can be communicated to the applicant. Mr. Byrne or Mr. Shartrind, would either of you like to make a brief comment?
No, I was, I would imagine, I would imagine that the college or the university has been notified of the intent of the applicant to have a package store almost on campus.
Would have been within the circle, which would have required notification.
Okay. Said it. Okay. That's all. Thank you.
But I, I would like to hear the colleges' thoughts on that, if they have any opinion one way or the other. I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Byrne, that the package store part of it concerns me. The convenience store part of it does not. So at any rate, I would like to, having made those brief comments and seeing that there are, there is no person in the audience wishing to make a comment, I would like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing to April the eleventh.
So moved, so moved.
All right, I will take that as a first and a second. By roll call, Mr. Gallagher on the motion?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Shartrind?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Byrne?
I, yes.
And myself as well. That public hearing is continued to April the eleventh. The next matter on the agenda is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash zero six. This is a continued matter. Veronica Green has made an application for a special permit at two twenty to two twenty-two Clarendon Street. This is an application to change a non-conforming use to another more detrimental use from a two-family to a three-family in Residential B. I do see that Ms. Green is in our audience. So I am going to open the public hearing, Ms. Green, and if you would again like to make a very brief comment on your application, please go ahead. I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Perfect. Thank you, board members. Basically, what we are trying to do is convert our two-family home into a legal three-family home for my elderly parents. It's just to be able to keep them close, have a safe environment for them, and that they also will be able to maintain their independence. I am my mother's personal care assistant, and she lives about almost an hour away, so to have her close would be beneficial for all of us, and like I said, they can maintain their independence, be in a legal unit, and sustain their safe.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Green. Is there any other person or member of the public who wishes to speak? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I am going to note to the board members that we did receive a parking plan from Ms. Green in between the last meeting and this one. So that should be available to you for viewing. If you do need a copy of it, please ask Ms. Mata for a copy to be sent. And then I'm also going to note just for the applicant's knowledge, we did receive two letters in opposition to the petition. Normally, I would read them into the record. I'm not going to do that tonight, but you, because this is a public record, you may request a copy of those communications, and we will be discussing them at the following meeting. Does any board member have any question or comment they wanted to make? Okay, seeing none. I am going to look for a motion to continue this public hearing until April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved, so moved.
I'll take that as a first and second. By roll call on the most, on the motion, Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, in favor.
Mr. Shartrind?
In the affirmative.
And Mr. Byrne?
Yes.
And yes, for me as well. That matter is continued until April the eleventh. Motion passes four to zero. Ms. Green, I would just suggest that you do contact the department and get a copy of those communications so that you can address the concerns that are raised in them. Okay? Good luck. All right, it is seven forty-three. And the next matter is scheduled for seven forty-five, and that is our final matter for this evening. So if any board member would like to provide a thirty-second update on their experience of this storm, they are welcome to do so.
Well, it's a lot of snow.
Mm-hmm. I would say about twenty inches at my house. And I am very thankful that my husband bullied me into buying a tractor years ago, and I say that, but he did. He was absolutely right about it, so. Mr. Byrne, I hope you are doing well and being safe at your home. Mr. Gallagher, this for you?
With a tree, about an eight-inch in diameter tree came down across the bottom of my driveway. So I, and the city plows keep putting piles and piles of snow on top of the tree. So I can't get out of here no matter what, so I'm glad we zoomed it tonight.
Me too. Me too. Mr. Gallagher, I know you've had quite a few difficulties today, and I appreciate you making the effort to be here, and Mr. Shartrind, I think you are still probably
What was that word you used?
I said difficulties. Difficulties.
It's a cookie. Oh, difficulties. Okay, good, I got it. I'm hearing this. My tongue got in front of my eye tooth, and I couldn't see what I was saying.
That is an absolute euphemism.
Yeah, I definitely, you know, here, I've just been, lots of snow, and my power is going in and out, like my cable and internet are down, and so it's, it just keeps going. It comes on and off, so. Yeah, it's been tough.
I appreciate, I appreciate all of you making the effort to be on this meeting, and Mr. Barbadoro, you as well, and Mr. Plenny, and Ms. Mata, whom I know is also undergoing some power difficulties. Um, it is time now where we may call the last matter and that is Z B A two thousand and twenty-three dash zero nine. This is Ruth Guz, Guzman. This is three twenty-four Lunenburg Street. And this is a request for a special permit under section one eighty-one nine four to reinstate a revoked special permit um, to convert, to reinstate a vacant building and use it as a three-family. Um, I see a, a person who may be the petitioner in the attendees. If so, please raise your hand and we will um, allow you to briefly address the petition. Um, as the hearing on three twenty-four Lunenburg Street is now open. Okay. I do not see um, any indication that that person wishes to speak. Um, if any person wishes to speak uh, from the public on this matter, please raise your hand. I see none. Um, given that, uh, does any, does any board member have a comment on this petition at this point in time?
Uh, I'll make a comment. Um, I'm a little uh, disappointed that the applicant did not show up to speak. Um, I know there's been some extenuating circumstances, but they missed a lot of the other meetings and that's why the permit was revoked. I would think that um, the urgency would uh, would be here this time. Um, so uh, I'm a little disappointed. But I understand that the weather is, is complicating a lot of things. Um, that said, outside of our area, there is no snow. So I don't know where she lives, but there's no snow in some places.
Very true. Um, does any other board member have a comment?
Uh, I do, Madam Chair. Yeah, it's Brian Gallagher. Uh, you said somebody raised their hand. That's not the petitioner?
Um, no one has raised their hand.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. Yeah, I believe the uh, petitioner is from Medford, Mass, if I read the paperwork correctly.
Mm-hmm. I very much understand um, the petition are not making it out here in person. I'm not sure why they are not um, able to call in and it does um, continue a pattern of behavior. Um, although that I do know that the applicant uh, was actively communicating with Ms. Mata um, in the days prior to the hearing on some questions that were raised. Um, I, I, just to address a couple of them, I believe that all owners of the property have now signed the special permit application uh, which was an issue and uh, the copies of all deeds um, up to current have been provided. Um, I'm gonna um, briefly make a comment that this doesn't seem to be a priority for the applicant. Um, and I, I do wish that were not the case, but I do, I, I am open to hearing about any extenuating circumstances that apply to the absence today, given the weather. Um, given that discussion, I believe that it is appropriate to continue uh, this public hearing. And I would be looking for a motion to continue that until the May meeting which is on May ninth. We are at um, I think capacity for the April agenda at this point, given the existing matters and the continuances. So is there a motion to continue? Great, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. By roll call vote, Mr. Byrne?
I.
Mr. Chartrand?
Uh, uh, in the affirmative.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, in favor.
And myself as well. The public hearing on that matter is continued until May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this point, unless any person uh, on the board has a miscellaneous matter to bring up, I think we have reached the end of the agenda. I don't see here Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
And again by roll call, Mr. Gallagher?
In favor.
Mr. Byrne?
Favor.
And Mr. Chartrand?
In the affirmative.
And myself as well. This meeting is therefore adjourned. Um, I thank everyone who took the time to participate and the work that went into putting this remote meeting together. Um, thank you, Mr. Glennie and F A T V. Thank you, Mr. Barbadoro, and thank you, Ms. Mata and board members. I hope everybody stays safe and well and have a good night.